Appreciate everything. Rising and let's say the pleasure of leading. Thank you. Why here on echo? Well, okay. And now we'll do a roll please.
Vice President Don. Treasure Prince.
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Gaten.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
And trustee Everard.
There.
Okay. Conservation ethic, I asked Ray to read those numbers quickly before. Then we're gonna shoot this.
Goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis for our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number four, to interpret and to promote you of natural and cultural resources and to promote public understanding and support management practices.
Thank you. And now the conservation stewardship pledge. John.
And five conservation stewardship pledge. Pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy, sustainable, natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong county and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number 11, we need to manage public lands through science in an manner that is responsive and resilient to a changing climate.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do we follow the role to adopt the agenda?
Yes, please. In a moment, just in a second.
All right, can I have a motion? So Lloyd makes the motion at 10 seconds in.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Vice President Don?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Okay, now. Always a happy occasion when we have folks to recognize. So Elizabeth, I'm gonna ask you if you would introduce Brad's. Introduce Brad and then say a few comments about his history with the district.
Sure, well, I'll start with the program. Several years ago, it was apparent that the district had an opportunity to recognize there's many individuals that give back to the conservation district annually and go above and beyond. And so we created this program to recognize our conservation champions and for those that have given back a great deal, and then also our conservation legacy program for individuals who have passed on, but with a very last, very long lasting way after they have passed for us. And so tonight, we are honored to recognize two individuals. And the first individual that we are elated to recognize is a good friend, Polly, and conservation champion Brad Semel. A little bit of background, Brad is very modest, but he is a giant when it comes to conservation work here locally. He has served in a variety of capacities, but clearly from the onset with our foundation. And our foundation, the McHenry County Conservation Foundation, is our volunteer partner. And they were established to assist the district and of course, all of the efforts through two ballot measures that Brad did champion at the helm, the grants that have been obtained from land acquisition, habitat restoration to public access. And so not only did Brad do that for the district with his contributions, he worked for the state of Illinois with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. He's known across for fighting wildfires and this is amazing. So when you read the resolution, you'll highlight some of the contributions, but there are many. And so that is why we recognize Brad as our conservation champion this year.
Thank you. Linda served for a time as our liaison to the foundations, so I've asked Linda to read the resolution, please.
And McHenry County Conservation District Resolution Number 23 dash 27, honoring Brad Semel with the 2023 Conservation Champion Award. Whereas the McHenry County Conservation District is a conservation district organized and existing under the laws of the state of Illinois, 70 ILCS or 10, and whereas one of the purposes of the district is to preserve and maintain wildland and hold it for the education, pleasure, or other open space values. And whereas the Board of Trustees, the district did authorize the creation of the Conservation Awards Program to recognize the extraordinary contributions of individuals throughout the Conservation Champion Award and Conservation Legacy Award through Resolution Number 18 dash 13 on January 18, 2018. And whereas Brad Semel was nominated and recommended to receive the 2023 Conservation Champion Award for his tireless and unwavering leadership in protecting the natural and cultural heritage in McHenry County and for his volunteerism and dedication of time and talents to serve as Director of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. Efforts both inspirational and impactful. And whereas Brad Semel during his extensive term on the McHenry County Conservation Foundation served in many roles, including that of Board President and led efforts in the passage of two border approved ballot measures to support land acquisition to store wildlife habitat and provide public access amenities. In addition to being instrumental in obtaining various grants, donations, and transfers of land to the district, as well as assisting in the establishment of the Hackmon Tech National Wildlife Refuge. And whereas Brad Semel's conservation leadership at the local, state, regional, and national level leaves legacy for current to future generations, whereby the people, plants, and wildlife in McHenry County are forever grateful for their selfless servant stewardship to protect our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the district that is desirable by the Board of Trustees of the district to approve the conferring of the 2023 Conservation Champion Award to Brad Semel in honor of the work and contribution to the conservation in McHenry County. Be it further resolved that the President and Secretary of the Board of Trustees are hereby authorized to execute this resolution and the Executive Director is authorized to execute other necessary documents to execute the intent of this resolution.
All right, and a roll call. Yes. Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Vice President Don?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Brad, if you would, if you wish to respond, I know it'll be brief, so we appreciate it.
Don't worry, I won't go into any long. I just know when I, when my wife, Ivan, I recognize her because she, she was wondering where I was a lot. But when our family moved up here to McHenry, right away, I, I spent a lot of time with Dr. Wayne Schenham and Brad Woodson and Collins up to the Natural Resources Management Post. We did some work with Illinois Natural Inventories, McHenry County Natural Inventories. So I got to know the staff very well. One of your staff members, Cindy Dublonski, was one of my graduate students. So I have a long history with some of the staff, especially with the Natural Resources Management and some of the other folks that were doing some of the the marketing and some of the projects that we've done to try to increase the funding that we can give to the district. But it's been a pleasure. I know there's some new faces probably if you're longer, who's this guy Brad Semel? Because I try to stay in the background as much as I can, but always trying to promote the district. I have two kids that are both in, one's a wildlife biologist, the other's a zookeeper. So we spent every moment we could hiking the trails, climbing the chains, and going all around the conservation district, all the sites. And under your leadership with Elizabeth, it's just been wonderful how the foundation has come together with the district. And I see some incredible things that can happen and there's a lot more open space that can be protected and a lot more recreation areas that can be provided to the more population in McHenry. So thank you very much for the, it sounded like a long run on.
You got a question, Brad? What kind of turtle?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. I was doing a wetland bird survey and I saw Tom and Gallinow, that's a morghana now, but I thought it was tangled up in fishing line. I reached down and like, what the heck? And I reached and his foot was grabbed by this guy and pulled him under, so I put the gallinow out.
Lucky he didn't get you. He was turtle soup.
You certainly deserve the recognition. Next, Elizabeth, would you help us with the recognition of Barb Wilson?
I will. Well, Barb Wilson, she is an individual who is to see which everyone that had the opportunity, and I did have a pleasure during my time here to, to get to work with her. And she had a fan club that followed her regularly. She was committed to the work that she did, particularly Lake in the Hills Fenn was one of her conservation areas. She did a lot of work with the Chicago Botanic Gardens and Plants of Concern, working with our plant ecologist, the phenology program, but steward and very much so from our educational programs as well, would work with our educational staff. And so always an opportunity to teach the uniqueness about the plants that were there, the uniqueness of a fenn and the rarity that it is. And so not only herself, but her family was very much involved. I know her daughter is online this evening as well, so we're so glad to have Jacqueline Moore with us. But both Al and Barb, but Barb being the one who's being recognized this evening, she definitely, lost her too soon, but she continued. But when you visit Lake in the Hills Fenn, you can't but visit that site and, and think favorably and remember the work that she left for all of us.
Jacqueline, can you hear us? I've asked if she wanted to say anything, she muted.
Yeah, sorry, here, I'm here. I can hear you. Thank you. I just wanted to say this is an honor that I appreciate tremendously, and I know she would have as well. This was, a lot of her life was dedicated to doing this nature conservancy, with the nature conservancy and with, as you said, with Plants of Concern and with the fenn. And she had a whole second career working there and helping out with kids and doing nature education. And it was her passion and I learned so much about nature from her and a love of nature from her that it's wonderful to see her honored and to see that she is remembered. And I, it's very touching. So thank you very much for this honor.
Oh, you're welcome. And now Vice President Don is gonna read this resolution.
It's McHenry County Conservation District Resolution Number 23 dash 28, honoring Barbara Wilson with the 2023 Conservation Legacy Award. Whereas the McHenry County Conservation District, referred as the district, is a conservation district organized under existing laws of the state of Illinois. And whereas one of the purposes of the district is deserve and maintain wildland and hold it for the education, pleasure, and our open space values. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the district did authorize the creation of the Conservation Awards Program to recognize the extraordinary contributions of individuals through the Conservation Champion Award and the Conservation Legacy Award through Resolution Number 18 dash 3 on January 18, 2018. And whereas Barbara Wilson was nominated and recommended by the Conservation Champion and Conservation Legacy Awards Committee to receive the 2023 Conservation Legacy Award for her unwavering leadership in protecting the natural environment of McHenry County for over 30 years. And whereas Barbara Wilson was actively involved in many aspects of the Conservation District efforts, most notably known for her co-stewardship of the Lake in the Hills Fenn Conservation Area as a volunteer for Chicago Botanic Gardens Plants of Concern Rare Monitoring Program. And as an educator who touched thousands of lives by leading many nature walks at the Lake in the Hills Fenn, teaching the public, school groups, scouting groups about such as wildflowers, geology, and conservation stewardship. And whereas Barbara Wilson truly inspired others and is admired for her knowledge, dedication, kindness, and commitment to the conservation. And now, whereas therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the district that is desirable by the Board of Trustees of the district to approve the conferring of 2023 Conservation Legacy Award to the family of Barbara Wilson in honor of the work and contributions to conservation in McHenry County that transcend time. And be it further resolved that the President and Secretary of the Board of Trustees are hereby authorized to execute this resolution and the Executive Director is authorized to execute other necessary documents to execute this intent of this resolution. And witness whereof, the Resolution Number 23 dash 28 has been executed this 25th day of April, 2023 by the President and attested by the Secretary of the Board of Trustees of the district.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Vice President Don?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Elizabeth, will this be mailed? We mailed this or how?
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
We'll get that mail to you then.
By the way, the wood and stuff that we talked earlier is recycled, we replanted wood from the district. And.
Our 2018 signs it. And I believe our facilities came back together, so.
Very nice.
And marketing too. Well, yeah.
Very good job.
Team effort.
Well, thank you all. We're now gonna recognize Chief Laura King, who has many accomplishments and has added another one to her list. That of the first female chief of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. And Elizabeth, would you like your comment?
I will. Well, again, congratulations, chiefs. They had the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police had their banquet on Friday night. And John Kramer, our Director of Operations Planning in Public Safety and myself and Arturo Diaz, who's our Police Chief Administrative Assistant, were all in attendance and to see her be honored in that role. And she did an amazing job. Her welcoming speech of her first meeting was, was wonderful. And there were a lot, thank you for those that sent in little takes to congratulate as a surprise to her. Laura, congratulations. I believe Laura's online here and so she'll have a busy year ahead.
Laura, would you comment?
I, I would. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you to everybody who attended and everybody who was in there in spirit. But more than anything else, you know, thank you to anybody who was there who might have been supporting or helping, you know, for me to get this position as chief of police. Because this accomplishment cannot be had unless you hold the office of chief of police. And so the reason the organization has been around for 80 plus years with, with formal board offices for more than 75, and this is the first time a woman went through the board and ascended to the position of presidency, is mainly because there, there still just are not all that many females that ascend to the chief executive office in law enforcement. And so you guys took a chance on me and you gave me this opportunity. And I have been trying to take full advantage of this opportunity to get us local, to do great things locally, to do great things across the state, to get us national recognition. And my work is only just begun. So I'm so excited for this opportunity. I thank you all who support me and who have given me this opportunity and we're gonna show them how it's done.
Do any of the trustees have any comments or would like to speak to the board as a whole about any activities?
Green Dranks, it's a month that was different construction things that you can do to save energy costs and similar to, from the Citizens Utility Board. Essentially, they talked about how they have tried to represent consumers and there's a number of state and federal rebates through the gas company and the electric company that they help you secure themselves. It was pretty interesting. In terms of the, the foundation, they meet coming up here a little bit, so we've been at that since our last meeting, so no reported.
Is anyone else?
Tony R. Oh, I just attended the Bull Valley Living with the Land. A strike, a strike ends up. They have a vision of turning in the Stickney House and maybe their barn into a venue for parties, weddings, photo ops. And then one of our residents at Bull Valley is a professor at the Art Institute, so he brought his students in and they designed this whole layout of a vision that they might have for the village, which is, is very nice. We'll see where it goes. But it was interesting, Amy was there as well, were you in the, in the evening? Yeah. I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, and I think Jen Oliver was there too. We just, yeah, it was interesting to see the connection with the school as a, as a really amazing project for they don't, it's not a planning program or landscape architecture program, it was fine arts. And so just to see how, you know, they organized the land and, and worked in. But it is lovely and it is a great vision, has some connections into our bog or bog property that we have there. So it's fun to see other people's ideas. So we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Wonderful.
But I, I hope it does.
Any of the other trustees?
Oh, yeah, I'm, April 5th, I attended MCCG meeting with John Kramer. We had a good time. I was really glad I made the effort to attend that because CMAP was there, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. That was news to me. I really had no idea that there was such a coordination between all the counties. And so they presented the state of the region that evening. And it was just really exciting to learn about the infrastructure and transportation and planning that goes on between all of our counties and how we're so involved in it. And really shows you that we do need to work together. So that, that was, that was a really good meeting. Did go to Earth Day on Saturday at Prairie View with my son. I brought my 12-year-old son, so we had a good time there. What an amazing turnout, even for the weather, they had to go inside. But there was, it was really, really busy. I was impressed. So I'd never been to that event before, even outside of being a trustee. So it was nice to attend and just a great, great setting to, to talk about Earth Day. You know, so it really made a difference. In terms of the board report, like to see that those district investments, those Illinois funds, man, year over year, that's a pretty impressive return. So I hope that at least levels out or increases. I don't know about, I don't know about that, but I might be asking for too much, but it's really nice to see that that investment is, is making a difference. And last would be the strategic focus direction. I want to thank Elizabeth and the staff for the time they put in on that. And I think the final draft looks all really good. So I'm glad to see that that's come around and all of our efforts and, and, you know, and our input and so is really refined that. Thank you.
Other trustee reports? Right? Okay. I don't see Jen there this evening. Elizabeth is young.
I did not see them online.
Okay, he was at the cow and I think contributed to our discussion. Perhaps nothing new. Okay. Likewise, I have nothing specific to comment upon this evening. We had the call last week and we reviewed a number of items. Always enjoy Ed's discussion about the districts past and how we got to where we are and what are, what are, what were the sort of philosophic points that, that underlay the decisions that previous boards have made and give some direction to where we hope, hope to be in the future. So now we'll turn to the public. I think we have some public here. And gentlemen or ladies, if anyone wishes to comment, please. Okay. Okay, basketball.
Yeah, no, I don't see any hands up.
Well, I, I just want to say that John did, John Ryder, the liaison here, did come back on our board meeting on Tuesday and was very complimentary about how informative it was and how we really appreciated the detail. And he always brings out all the information, so incredibly important that people hear it. So he was very complimentary.
Excellent. Okay.
Hi, my name is John Barris. I'm with the Village of Greenwood.
Yes.
And I wanted to kind of touch base, something I've been working on. And I'm glad that you mentioned the CMAP. All, all work together. Cause I'm looking for kind of a partnership. I have an issue with two bridges that need to be done and I don't have the funding for it. But I found some grants that, that may work and I've spoken to Elizabeth a couple of times on this. There's a new grant out now for wildlife crossings. And I haven't found anybody to talk to yet, find out if it's possible, but I'd like to get a grant for the bridge. And if maybe you guys could get a grant for the wildlife crossing, we can combine them and, and help each other out with that. So I don't know if you guys would be open to that at all?
Well, we, we have had some discussion about the letter and your correspondence with Elizabeth. And I have no specific background in civil engineering or.
Me neither, me neither. And I have no experience in the grant process.
You know, sort of municipal government and, you know, issues between villages, townships, county, and so forth. My personal view is that the district has to be very careful about commitments regarding road maintenance.
Yes. No, 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 this, this is nothing about the maintenance. It's, it's kind of a, I'm, I'm kind of looking for a partnership. Yes, no, 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 this, this is nothing about the maintenance. It's 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 kind of a, um, I'm pay, I'm kind of looking for a partnership and deal. To help me get what I need, because we don't have the funding for it. We can get a grant, but then we have to pay twenty percent. We have about three hundred and fifty residents and we have two bridges and it's gonna be about one and a half to two million for each bridge. So we'd have to have twenty percent of it and there's no way we did that. So the other option is we'd have to give up part of the road. So I did, I just, I basically, I wanted to see if you guys could be open to a discussion and seeing if there's opportunities there for both of us.
I think we need more information and so as you present the information to Elizabeth, you will pass it along to us and whatever the appropriate setting is and involve the members of the staff who have expertise in these areas, um, you know, transportation and
Yes.
funding and so forth and wildlife, uh, issues. Always the question of, you know, how does the chicken cross the road? And, um, the thing about the district is that, um, if we do something in one area of the county for one municipality, uh, then that might, um, set the, uh, stage for other requests. And obviously everyone has a budget and priorities and someplace in the conservation, um, the statutes that govern us. I'm not sure that that this is sort of one of the things that's that's covered, but we should entertain.
Yeah, because my my hope is this helps everybody down the road that, you know, you can get partnerships with other municipalities with
Right.
two hours.
The question about the partnership issue is whether it's our wallet that's being, uh, passed, so to speak.
Well, absolutely.
And, you know, a grant is one thing, but then funds for, um, maintenance operations and things like that. Is a bigger issue. So I I appreciate your coming in. I think we all appreciate it. We're all here to learn and to do the best we can managing the district's, uh, resources. And I think working through Elizabeth and and the staff is the way to go. And they'll present it to the board and in a timely fashion, if it, we need, if you need to know yay or nay, we'll respond to that.
Yeah, well, we're still in the beginning of this, so we're still, I don't even know if it can be done. Right, so we're just kind of coming here to say, you know, can we just explore this and see where it goes?
I think we can explore. Sure. Yeah. There's anyone else? I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody. I'm just speaking for myself. And once I start speaking, I know, stop.
I've seen him in Colorado when they have the path for the elk and deer or something.
Yeah.
I think, did we have the first one in the Midwest?
We have that on Thursday. There was a first one, right? And I think with the new grant opportunity, just to what we'll look at. I have had conversations with, uh, Director of, uh, Life Conservation Natural Resources, Collins. And because we have property across the way and because of the conservation design, um, you know, we're not sure if the grant as far as how it would score. You know, we don't know enough if it's if it's, you know, a percentage of cash in or if there's other impact that would qualify. And then how it would score in the whole
Yeah.
picture and would that be enough to match, um, what you need? But the concept of, um, actually I was on a move to twenty fifty plan today with transportation that expressed with this. And and that when we're looking for roads and because of conservation, meaning we look for lives, safety of lives and drivers. We also should be looking habitats for travel crossings and other types of deer. So we don't have collisions.
Snowmobiles.
Reserve and and all of that. So, um, it is, it is timely and I think we just have to continue to work puzzle, you know, like we do and and see if get us a solution or not.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Anyone else in the public, um, just to comment about anything? Wonderful. Okay, uh, now the consent agenda. So Linda.
Yes, I moved that we do this consent agenda, approval of minutes, twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Twelve point one A, February twenty first, twenty twenty three, meeting of the whole institute session. Twelve point one B, March sixteen, twenty twenty three, regular meeting. Twelve point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for March thirty first, twenty twenty three, as presented. Twelve point two D, acceptance of the investment report of fiscal year twenty twenty three, quarter four ended March thirty first, twenty twenty three. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty three dash twenty nine, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four, that just slathered program. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty three dash thirty, a resolution adopting the strategic focus and direction for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, fiscal year twenty twenty eight, strategic plan. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty three dash thirty one, awarding the contract to power enterprises LLC of Algen, Illinois. For the Blasian Park demolition, football building, interim residence and research yield station project in Winwood, Illinois for the base bid amount of two hundred eighty three thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars and forty cents plus the alternative number one amount of seventy four thousand one hundred sixty three dollars and forty cents for the combined total cost, not to exceed three hundred and fifty seven thousand eight hundred fifty four dollars and eighty cents. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty three dash thirty two, awarding contract to enhance networks in of Munderline, Illinois and operating the insective contractor to execute a professional service agreement again, beginning April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three and end March thirty first, twenty twenty four. Twelve point seven, ordinance number twenty three dash one oh two five, adopting the twenty twenty three hunting administration for deer, waterfall and new spring turkey as presented. Twelve point eight, resolution number twenty three dash thirty three, authorizing the submission of Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Illinois Bicycle Grant Program, application for trail renovations and improvements in rural Henry County, Illinois. Twelve point nine, ordinance number twenty three dash ten twenty six, authorizing a budget line item transfer in the amount of three hundred and fifty seven dollars, eight hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty dollars and eight hundred and forty four dollars and eighty cents between accounts O two dash O nine dash nine sixty five, O two dash O nine dash nine sixty six and O two dash O seven dash seven ninety within dedicated defense capital fund for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Twelve point ten, resolution number twenty three dash thirty four, authorizing the insective director to execute a grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, open space land acquisition and development brand O S L I D for improvement at the house conservation area. Twelve points eleven, resolution number twenty three dash twenty seven, rescinding prior authorization to prepare specification and let it's for a real tracking program.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Other board business, approval of bills payable for the month of March. Want to thank Sean for, uh, pulling a few invoices and want to thank the staff for responding. But there was one question that John raised that I didn't see a response to, and that was the issue of lumber or wood uh, for one of the sites where, and Sean's question was, why are we purchasing wood? Or fireplaces or wood burning soaks when we have a conservation district with a number of trees and bedfalls and things like that. Is it really necessary and cost effective or? And so, I mean, that's not the biggest budget item, but I thought it was a good question and I didn't see an answer.
I mean, I get wood from lumberjacks too, but that's because, you know, we we burn it inside the house and it needs to be cleaned and all that kind of stuff. So I get it. They've they've got the best one around. There's no question. So I was just curious, like, we've got to have lots of oak trees that are down that we get our.
Yeah, so John is on, but I will speak. Several years ago, we did this Mission Impossible and we did look at, that was an opportunity. But we were looking at ways to capture revenue, save dollars. And and we did do a test pilot program for a while of capacity of staff and to work with everyone doing some of that. Our campgrounds, et cetera, use use wood, et cetera. And so bringing that in. And John, you have to speak to exactly what this amount is for. I'm assuming it is for our campground sales.
Yeah, I'm assuming that is the, uh, the rese, for resale. Um, and we we do, uh, some, you know, bucking up of of, uh, wood and stacking and drying. But it's fill-in work, uh, for people like a rain day in the summer or something like that, uh, where we have seasonals around. Um, so we do some of that and and then we purchase some as well. Um, I can tell you that, and this is, uh, from conversations with other directors of operations and and, you know, and 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 they have said that, uh, it's ju- just like we kind of found, it's it's not a moneymaker, but it is a fill-in, uh, for us. So we do that, uh, some, and then we augment and, uh, sell, uh, what, you know, uh, some as well or buy for resale as well.
All right. Well, I think Sean, you know, is very astute in seeing a bill raising a question. I appreciate the fact that apparently you've looked at this issue and this seems to be, um, rational, uh, course of action.
I said one other question though, um, on the computers, I didn't get a chance to look. My apologies would, those were budgeted computers for the this year.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Two are for the the top box or for the police department that is more happy to be, and the other was for natural resources and because we added another college.
A thirteen point one B's, consideration will prove the payment with bills that indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending March thirty one, twenty twenty three. Second.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. All right, um, so, uh, we've had discussions over the, uh, past year about the, uh, proposed Queen Anne Prairie macro site snowmobile trail. And, uh, the staff has done quite a bit of work and had, um, discussions amongst themselves and with the board of trustees about some options. And, um, at the cow, we looked at the map and, um, the option that's been recommended. And, um, what we have in front of us, uh, a motion, uh, to adopt that, uh, snowmobile trail. I appreciate all the work that went into this.
Actually, it's two years.
Okay. By imply.
Yeah.
When you're having fun, right?
At least, huh?
All right. So, uh, any further discussion? Have you gentlemen seen the trail as it's been proposed?
Not sure we have. Um, if it's good, I'd love to. I'd love to snap a picture of something so I can carry it back for our discussion. Because I know we have proposed a few different options and I'm not sure which one landed.
I'm gonna have to direct you to.
I can, uh, I can show after the meeting. I can present that out too. And I actually had a letter once to get through tonight too, that I will be sending back.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, so, Chris, would you make the motion then?
Sure. I move that we, uh, adopt the proposed Queen Anne Prairie, my macro site, snowmobile trail alignment for the request of the Kennedy County Snowmobile Association, resolution number twenty three dash thirty five, resolution approving the proposed snowmobile trail alignment as shown on her Queen Anne Prairie proposed snowmobile trail sheet, which is the vision three dated three fifteen twenty three. And to direct the staff to add it to the annual site use agreements with the McHenry Snowmobile Clubs, the Kennedy County Snowmobile Clubs, lists of trails, lineups as presented.
And second thing.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Sorry.
Excuse me. I I was confused.
I didn't want to cut anybody off if they wanted to.
Yeah, this cut me off.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Gate?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Hope to get more snow.
Thank you. All right, now Elizabeth, we need to, uh, vote on this, um, change order regarding the prairie trail south. Does anyone, any questions or comments before we vote on this?
What's, yeah, I forget what the change order is just.
So it's the soils. So as we, we've got a lot of projects moving and just so from our purchasing policy, just a little bit of background uh, for the trustees, the policy does allow us to have change orders. It allows me to execute the change orders. So we can keep the the contractor in the field and moving forward, um, and then we bring that forward for ratification. So, um, that's exactly what occurred here. You've got the specifics of the amount of the change order. And there is a limitation, right, of of the change order that it can be, of course, it's new. This is possible within that. No, but I'm, I'm having to answer all your questions.
Okay, so this is resolution twenty three dash thirty six, the resolution modifying the executive director's execution of change order number one in the amount of six thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty cents with V three Construction Group Limited of Woodridge, Illinois, to address the unsuitable soils found during the prairie trail south Meyer Drive stream erosion trail stabilization project. Bid O eight two two point O nine point zero one. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
I wrote.
You did? I just want to make sure you wanted to do that. Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trust, uh, Trustee Gate?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Project comment in terms of when you think that trail will be done this summer.
Super cool. I'm not gonna lie. Yeah, it's, um, that's technical. That's a technical term. And to to be able to get away from just doing a new, uh, layer of asphalt and actually be able to, um, you know, meander a stream that's been channelized for so long. It looks really nice. So we have, I have pictures we can keep sharing. We were unable to apply the drone, like we hoped, just because of the weather. But as soon as we get, um, to do that, um, we can have that to share. Um, but there's, um, fish, there's more fish, the lunker structures are all in place. Um, and there were snapping turtles, so our our contractors have had to deal with some of the wildlife that we want, um, to be there, um, in the work. But they're doing great and they're actually, I don't want to jinx it, but, um, they're a little bit ahead of schedule. So.
That was in mid, mid May that they were looking at?
Yeah.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Well, we look forward to a different picture. All right, Elizabeth, now fourteen point oh.
Okay, you have in your packet all of our quarterly reports for the last quarter of the fiscal year. Um, and so, uh, again, great work on the status of projects, you know, the biggest piece on that was, you know, the budget was delay in vehicles, uh, would happen to be appropriate in those being tight, but otherwise things are tracking as such. Strategic plan updates and you have the dashboard there. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer that for the board either tonight or or after the meeting. Um, and just a few other things. So yes, Earth Day, great event. Thank you for those that turned out. We also picked off our first hype with Mike, uh, who would stay outside and had a nice, uh, we had several county board members join us, uh, for the hype and attended the event and hopefully, um, that will continue to. And hopefully, um, that will continue. The next one will be May twentieth at Marango Ridge. And um, what we're doing as we look towards these is we're augmenting some of it. It'll just be a recreational hike. This one was more of an educational hike. That was led um by Quentin, our visitor services uh coordinator, to really share a lot of things along the trail. It was very informative. So that was great. Um, I am headed down to Springfield very early tomorrow morning with Natron, my friend of county. Um, we will be advocating for tourism funding and and the existence of importance of that organization. And then next week will turn around and we'll go back. Christie is joining me. Um, and we'll be down there for Parks Day on on Tuesday and Wednesday. And uh, we have coordinated um gatherings. So we have a a lot of our uh state, both on the Senate and our House, joining us at the reception. And for dinner afterwards to meet and coordinate with the First Lake Park District, Perry Park District, family park district, Mizra. So and in County Forest Reserve District. So we're kind of the coordinators of that, but there'll be a great time to dialogue. And so if there's any uh items that you wish me to have the ear of our legislators while I'm there. Please let me know. We know already one of them that we've had their ears towards and we will continue to have their ears. Um, but uh, yeah, it'll be a great opportunity. So that's where I will be. And um, also then May fourth is the, just a reminder again for those at home and here, Lions Prairie March, um, we are doing the open house. And so with our consultants and associates, so that's an opportunity for the public to give. Give feedback um and to learn what's going on with that project. And then I and and some of our staff members from our planning department, Ian Jen, we were on the uh, go move to twenty fifty. Um, project, they're gonna do another presentation and then we'll be one of the colleagues. So we kind of uh. Leaned in on that to to see what's going on, but they're kind of identifying what are the roads, what are the priorities, what are the transportation corridors? Uh, for pedestrian bikes, um, you know, different types of transportation. So very interesting. Uh, they do a very nice job. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Okay. Um. I mean. I think the trustees have already spoken about their activities and assignments. Anyone has anything else to add? Now's the time to. Speak up. Beyond that, we'll move to public comments number two. Anyone out there who wishes to? Speak up.
Stand up or kind of speak from here.
Speak loud and.
I just would, I'm with the Woodstock Snowmobile Club. I'm the trail minister for the club. I just wanted to thank you publicly for allowing us to have access to the. Queen Anne property to put a trailing. Appreciate it. I know it's been a. You know, I know it it hasn't been easy. It wasn't, you know, the discussion around the eagle. I mean, I was ignorant of the fact that people would disturb an eagle. I never even gave a thought when I was here last time. Curious to know where it was. I mean, I I never thought people would mess with something like that. So. It was, I struggled to understand. Why it wasn't easy to allow us access, I guess, is is.
And we had to look into US Fish and Wildlife.
Right.
Specifications and we found.
Right.
That text and then that, you know, gives us some reassurance that we're not. You know, not breaking any of those.
Right.
Rules and regulations.
You guys continued to dig into it and and see what it would take and and getting the status. Well, thank you.
The staff does all the work. We just uh. Yeah.
Get the credits.
All right. We appreciate your taking time to uh follow through with us and Elizabeth will provide a.
Thank you.
The map for you. Pat's in charge of snow, so if you have any. Snow, you have.
Yeah, I just soon, I want some of that.
And I think we're ready to adjourn, so we'll take a motion.
A second. Trustee Everard?
Yeah.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Treasure Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Thank you. Follow me.